Good evening. Welcome to the December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. The Board of Selectmen, all selectmen are present. I apologize for the five-minute delay. My computer was not cooperating, or I just don't know how to operate it. First item on the agenda, six-thirty P. M., General On-Premises Wine and Malt Beverages License, Expressions Art Bar LLC DBA, Expressions Art Bar, one-six-two Corderville Road, Suite 182, Mary S. Simmons, or Simons, I apologize, manager. Mr. Purple.
So just to read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one-thirty-eight of the Mass General Laws that Expressions Art Bar LLC DBA, Expressions Art Bar, Mary S. Simmons, manager, has applied for a general on-premises wine and malt beverage license. On the premises located at one-sixty-two Corderville Road, Suite 182, Southborough, Massachusetts, described as one-floor shopping plaza, Suite 182, to be licensed to five rooms, one main entrance, two exits, one thousand eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet, two handicapped unisex bathrooms, a storage room, office, and art studio space with a paint station slash sinks and a bar front. Public hearing will be held in the Thomas W. McCallif Hearing Room, second floor of the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass., on Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six-thirty P. M., Board of Selectmen, Southborough Licensing Authority.
Good evening. Could the applicant please come up here, introduce yourselves? You need to speak into the microphone, although it's not amplifying, but there's a recording.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Attorney Fred Tanous. I am here on behalf of Expressions Art Bar.
Your last name again, sir?
Tanous. T.A.N.N.O.U.S.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Expressions Art Bar LLC, Mary Simons. I'd like to introduce Ms. Anna Glotier, who is the interpreter for my client.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Mary Simmons, and I want to thank you for having me here tonight.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate you wanting to do business in Southborough.
Yep.
Counsel, can you tell us a little bit about the business?
The business is an art studio. It's called, in the industry, Paint and Sip, where...
Paint and sip?
Paint and sip, which means that there's painting parties, there's kids' classes, there's fundraiser...
Say kiss?
Kids. Kids.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Kiss classes, too.
I thought it was the paint and sip. Sorry.
Adult classes where alcohol beverages are served. It's a social painting party. It's an event. It's very, very popular throughout the states. There's, if you want me to get into the detail of the business, there's instructors that teach how to paint. It's a social gathering where usually it's mothers with their children. They go in and they spend quality time. It's an art studio. It's a big space. It's functional.
And tell us a little bit about the service of alcoholic beverages.
Well, there is an instructor that teaches the paint classes. There's bartenders. Everyone that's going to be in the establishment must be trained in tips and serve safe, the instructors. My client, Mary, is a single member of the LLC. It's her business. She's going to be there all the time. You know, she's going to be training the staff. It's a situation where she literally lives three minutes away from the establishment. She's been in Southborough for the past three and a half years. Her husband was born and raised in Southborough, so, you know, she's been married for a number of years. She has two small children. She retired as a special needs teacher to open up this business.
Does she have any experience in this business in terms of the service of alcohol or engaging in...
Two years.
Two years.
I've done paint and sip parties on the side, part-time, for two years while I was a teacher at the Learning Center for the Dauphin for Birmingham.
Okay.
So I would do private parties, and I would travel, mobile sip, paint and sip parties. I've recently done a party for the Southborough Art Council. I've done parties at Southborough House of Pisa, and tomorrow I have a party at Waterfash Farm in Hopkinton. So it would be nice to have a studio that I wouldn't have to travel as much. This past weekend, I drove up to Vermont for a party. So it's a lot of traveling, and we have a lot of people lined up to take our classes in the spring.
And so I assume you're already certified to serve alcoholic beverages?
I took a bartending course. I took a serve-safe class, serve-safe alcohol class in Southborough, and I took a tips class.
Okay. How many employees do you anticipate working at any one time?
About five, based on what other studios have done. Some have a little less, some have a little more, depending on... They're all part-time staff. It depends on how many hours that they will do, but it's about five on average.
And what would the hours of the business be?
We are open for reservations only from eight in the morning to midnight, and typically would have one or two morning classes, maybe nine or ten o'clock, and then maybe evening classes, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, and then the rest would be private events.
Okay. Does any member of the board have any questions?
Yes.
Just very quickly.
Sure.
Thank you for coming in. Just as a... Remind me, please, what is currently in the suite that you're looking to go to occupy?
It's vacant. It's vacant.
What was the most recent occupant?
It's...
Who was before me? It was a jeweler.
Top row jewelers? Okay.
They were there for ten years, I think.
Okay. Is the liquor license we're discussing being transferred from a current holder in town, or is this off the shelf?
It's brand new. It's...
Okay.
We're applying for it. There's no existing transfer of a license.
The hours of operation that Ms. Simmons just mentioned of eight to midnight contradict the information we have in our packet, which says nine to eleven. So I wonder, Counsel, if you have a...
What I think she meant was, she's going to get there at eight in the morning, and after the parties, you know, probably an hour to clean up after. So it's typically from nine to eleven.
We have an establishment in town, Mr. Chair, called Culinary Underground. It's essentially the same concept with cooking classes and beer and wine is served while, you know, those kinds of things are going on. I think it's a very similar analog, and I'm going to support this. I don't have any further questions.
Mrs. Fannin?
Only a question as far as who's being served. It's anyone that is registered for a class. It's not open to the general public. You would have to be participating in order to be served.
You have to register. Everything's pre-registered.
There's no walk-ins. Everyone that comes through the door is greeted by an individual that has a checklist, so it's by reservation. We'll know for sure if it's just an adult-only, if there's children, you know.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Semino. It's very similar to something we already have in place. Thank you.
Mr. Kalenda.
Nothing, Mr. Ray. Just to echo your comment about, you know, thank you for your willingness to do business here in Southborough. I appreciate it.
Mr. Shea?
No additional questions, but again, good luck in your business and welcome to Southborough.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would... Mr. Semino, you have a motion?
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a general on-premises/wine and malt beverages license to Expressions Art Bar LLC as presented here tonight.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Simmons. Welcome. Ms. Simmons, congratulations. Welcome to the business world in Southborough, and we wish you many years of success. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, our fiscal year two thousand and fifteen audit report. Good evening, Mr. Frayer. Why don't you identify yourself, and for those that may not know you?
Yep.
And I take it you have a presentation for us, so I'll just let you dive right into that.
All right. My name is Bill Frayer. I'm the auditor, the CPA outside auditor for the town of Southborough, the independent auditor of the town of Southborough. I think we're just going to get right into the numbers. Just a quick overview, the audit went well. We didn't have any material issues, as is the case in pretty much every year. We didn't identify any material weaknesses or any major issues in the management letter. So those are a good thing. And in terms of comparing fourteen to fifteen, it was pretty much a status quo year in the sense that there weren't any major new projects, there weren't any major new grants, which we like as auditors. It's sort of... There weren't a lot of curveballs in this year's audit, so that's good. We do have some slides, so I'm going to start with the first slide. And that first slide shows the general fund, and while your financial statement has a lot of information in there, and there's a lot of funds involved, the general fund is obviously the fund that everybody focuses on. It represents the budget that's voted on at annual town meeting. So I like to put up this five-year trend just to show how revenues and expenses change from year to year, and not to really discuss any of the particular changes unless you have any questions, but more to look at the five-year average. And as you see from that, the change in revenues on average over the last five years, two-point-seven percent, and the change in expenses is two-point-one percent. And that kind of puts you in the pack. That's what I am seeing in most towns. A low end would be around two, a high end would be around four. I'm sure there are outliers, but just that's what I see. So you're kind of in the middle of the pack, and there really hasn't been any major changes from year to year that are unusual. You're always going to have some deviations. You have a year up there that's at three percent. What I know the bond people don't want to see, and you don't do this, is large swings. So, oh, we have a lot of money. We're going to have a five or six percent or seven percent increase in the budget. Oh, we don't have any money. We're going to have to cut the budget. So when they see a pattern like this that's more predictable and sticks around that two, three, four percent, they look at that more favorably.
Second slide, Brian. Thank you. So this shows what you are using for free cash and other available funds, whether it's overlay surplus, old articles, whatever, to help to offset the costs in the budget, budget being, including articles. So as you can see, that has wavered or fluctuated from about a million and a half up to a high of two-point-three million in two thousand and twelve. I know that the free cash, you know, has been going down a little bit, and so that's reflected in how much is available to use in the budget. So that's gone down the last few years, but it's still a healthy amount, and I know you've also declared overlay surplus, and that's helped to offset certain things in the budget. The second column is the net budgetary variance. So what that is, is once you set your budget, how do your revenues and expenses actually compare to budget? Obviously, you want to see that be positive, and if you look at the last two columns, it gives you the actual percentage. And what we've talked about in prior years is a lot of towns like to be around that two percent variance in terms of revenues and expenses. Fifteen was a tough year. I think the snow and ice is what kind of hit you, and you were able to use the reserve fund and transfers from other budgets so that you didn't have to raise anything on the recap for sixteen. So that's the reason why that particular point-four percent, which is pretty low. You don't like to be that tight on your budget, but it was a decision, I think it was a wise decision made, that rather than put the deficit on the recap in sixteen, you had the available funds to transfer around. But other than that, you're sticking in that, you know, one, two, three percent range. So again, nothing surprising, no real large percentage variances that I would be concerned about with that. Third slide, please. So here is the free cash and the stabilization fund, and the bond people look at these combined as the town reserves. So when someone says, what does the town have in reserve for a rainy day or some tough financial times, what do you have? And the bond people look at free cash and stabilization. And as we've talked about in prior meetings, these numbers were a lot higher many years ago, and there was a decision made to use some of that and to bring that number down. You're definitely on the low end of the scale. They like to see a five percent minimum. They're happier when it's around ten percent. So over the last few years, it's been hard to keep a lot of money in free cash. Stabilization really hasn't wavered much, but you're down to three and a half percent of the budget. That's definitely on the low end of what I see. Didn't affect your bond rating, so that's a good thing. Next slide are your capital assets. So this represents everything that we consider to be capital or fixed assets: buildings, roads, equipment, vehicles, land, that sort of stuff. And the reason I show this is I like to see that the gross assets, which is the amount before depreciation, grows, is growing over time. You don't want to see, you know, that be completely stagnant. So you've got a one-point-four percent five-year average growth in that, and that's good. You haven't had any major projects for a long time. Sometimes you'll see spikes in those numbers if you build a new school or do something like that, but there haven't been any big projects, so you've been around that, you know, just over one percent. On the depreciation side, you'll see that net of depreciation, the five-year average is that it's decreased by one-point-three percent. And what that's telling me is you're close to replenishing. As you're using equipment, as your roads are aging, you're putting money back in. What you wouldn't want to see in that column is a five-year average where the net is going down five percent a year, because that's going to tell people that you're not reinvesting in your capital, and you need to do that. So again, those are all positive numbers. Next, Brian, please. Okay, debt and pension. So start with the debt, and as, again, as we've discussed in the past, the town has not borrowed for a long time for anything major, so the debt has been coming down. And as you see, from eleven to twelve, twelve to thirteen, thirteen to fourteen, there was over ten percent increase every year. The increase in fifteen was all on the water side. There was no debt issued on the general government side, if you will, but the enterprise fund did issue some debt in two thousand and fifteen, so the total debt of the town did go up. One thing I did want to mention is your debt has always been interesting because so much of it is related to schools, and you get the MSBA, the Mass Building, School Building Association reimbursement. So I just wanted to throw out the numbers. Of that twenty million at the end of fifteen, fifteen-point-six is general government, meaning non-water debt. And of that fifteen-point-six million, the net of what you'll be getting back over the years through MSBA is six and a half million. So that's a pretty low level of debt for a town this size, and again, reflects the fact that there have not been any major new projects. So you have that capacity to borrow because you are at a pretty low level. Another statistic, just to throw out, the debt service budget that you had for two thousand and fifteen was three-point-four-six million. Two-point-two million of that came back from MSBA. So your net debt service budget was one-point-two-six million, which is three percent of the total budget, and again, that's pretty low. So the capacity is there.
So if I could ask a question and interrupt you. The town is going to be asking town meeting in the not-too-distant future to incur substantial debt to build a public safety facility. You've been our auditor for a number of years. You've reviewed our books, so to speak, and our debt capacity. How is the timing, based upon your opinion, for incurring that type of a debt?
Well, given these trends, it's a good time, because I was here when the schools were built and the renovations were done, so that, I don't know if it was around forty million, but there was that block of time when all of that was spent, approved by town meeting and the voters, was spent and borrowed. So you've been slowly since that was done in the early, I think, two thousands, the debt's been coming down, coming down, coming down. So it's there. And it's probably also a good time, because when you think about the... It doesn't seem that long ago, but the school projects being finished between ten and fifteen years ago, it's not going to be long before you're faced with, you know, well, what's going on with the roof at these schools, or what's going on with this. So it's a good time, because those schools will, in ten more years, start to need attention.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think it would be appropriate giving this slide.
Nice break. The last column, I just wanted to mention, while I said at the beginning that it was a pretty status quo audit. GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board that regulates what you have to show in your financial statements, in their infinite wisdom decided that you are, you, all communities, all government entities, that are in a multi-employer pension plan, as you are in the Worcester Regional System, you're now required to record in your financial statements your share of their unfunded liability. So this has always existed. It just never had to be recorded as a liability. So we had to bring on a nineteen-point-two million-dollar liability, which is your share of the regional system's fairly large liability. The good news on that is that several years ago, you started funding this through increased assessments, and by two thousand and thirty-four, those increased assessments are supposed to eliminate the unfunded liability, but it has to come on your books. And again, it doesn't change anything. It doesn't change the budget, but it changes when someone looks at the financial statements and tries to compare it to last year. If people don't have anything better to do, they'll see a much larger liability.
Well, it's nice. It's not hidden anymore.
Right.
As it used to be, and schools, communities had no idea
No.
...how much liability was out there
No.
...until we addressed this, at least here, a few years ago, and started adding a very small amount, but at least it's something.
Yeah, yeah. And that, again, by two thousand and thirty-four, it's supposed to be gone, so that's a good thing. And, you know, GASB put a lot of focus on the pensions this year, and it's been interesting. You know, just as an aside, the mass teachers' retirement system, you all, meaning the town, is not required to fund the retirement for your teachers. That is by statute required to be done by the Commonwealth. And when all these actuarial studies of these pension plans were done, the amount that the Commonwealth contributed to the mass teachers' retirement system just for fifteen was almost a billion dollars. So there's much lar... You know, that seems like a big number, but there's much larger liabilities in some of these other plans, because they're bigger, obviously. And then the last slide is OPEB. And OPEB is the number that GASB, starting in two thousand and nine, required you to record, and that's for the retiree health insurance. And just the basic, quick concept of that is that what GASB is having you do is accrue a liability so that by the time a given employee retires, the liability for their health insurance from the time they retire until they're projected to no longer need it is on the books. And so every two years, you have to have an actuarial study that updates that number. And starting last year, or in fourteen, you put, you established an OPEB trust fund, which is allowed under state law, and you put fifty-five, fifty-thousand, fifty-five, fifty thousand
All-in-all.
...into it. You had a good year on investments that year, and then you put more money in in fifteen. And that, you know, I would encourage that to continue, because the bond, John was at the meeting with Moody's, you know, they are focused on, are you funding your OPEB liabilities, so...
And I want to formally thank you for participating in that meeting, because your participation resulted in the bond rating that we secured. So again, thank you very much for participating in that meeting.
The amount that we're funding, I still feel that it's incredibly inadequate, but there's only so much in one budget that you can put towards it. At least we're doing something.
Yeah.
Is... Do you have any guidance on that, from what you see from other towns?
Everybody is all... It really is a matter of, you know, taking that long-term look and seeing, what do we have? You know, what kind of capacity do we have in our budget? Are there any new revenue sources? You know, there are other towns that have been fortunate where, you know, they've adopted a meals tax, because they have a lot of new businesses that that has helped them with, and that is going into OPEB. I have towns that have done nothing, that have put no... Yeah, they just feel like they don't have the money right now. So, you know, you're not doing as much as others, but you're doing more, you know, you're doing more than others and not as much as others, I guess. And it's really hard, because it comes down to the priorities, as you guys know, when you're setting the budget. It's just...
Mm-hmm.
Depends. It's always good to do more, but it's three hundred thousand. I mean, it's a good start.
Okay. I want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the report that we've read. Does anyone have any follow-up questions, Mr. Kalenda?
Just one on free cash. I know you mentioned that's getting pretty low. Is there a recommendation to there? Is it... Are we...
Well...
You know, is there a concern?
I mean, all I can tell you is that the general rule of thumb is they, you know, they, the bond people, the number that's thrown around, which is a huge range when you're talking about a fifty-million-dollar, forty-million-dollar budget, is five to fifteen percent. So that's a big range, because it's a four-million-dollar range. What I see most towns trying to get to is somewhere around ten percent or eight to ten percent. The bond people I know like you to have at least five, so you're at, that chart that showed the combined was three and a half.
Mm-hmm.
You're on the low end. And again, it becomes, you know, another thing in the priority bucket, right? We got OPEB. We've got building up our free cash or stabilization. We've got all the budgetary needs. We've got the capital needs. It's... But I guess that's what I can say, is you are below that sort of low end of the target range.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Semino?
You identified four control deficiencies, which I understand is the lowest level of sort of concern. Among those four, is there one or more that we should be particularly concerned about, or is it just a matter of thoroughness on your part, which I appreciate?
Yeah. There's nothing... I mean, if there was something major, again, it would fall into one of the other categories. I think it's always good. There's a boilerplate comment that I have in every management letter about internal controls and risk assessment. The vast majority of money that's collected here goes through the treasurer's office, treasurer collector's office, and there's, you know, there's built-in controls there. The miscellaneous stuff that's out at departments is always challenging, so I think it's always good to monitor that, but there's nothing, you know, and as I may have said last year, I don't know, but it's not that these conditions don't exist. I have management letters that have comments into the twenties. So the fact that you have four is a good thing. Thank you.
Anything further?
One... I'm sorry. The Water Enterprise Fund, back to what Mr. Semino was asking, or getting at anyway. Did you recommend... You recommended that the town take town meeting to set up an enterprise fund?
It's... You know, the Bureau of Accounts, the Department of Revenue, Bureau of Accounts encourages the enterprise funds because it segregates everything over. It asks towns to identify all the costs associated with it, so the benefits, the retirement, all that stuff. It's a recommendation. One of the reasons I put it in there is several times over the last many years, because it's not an enterprise fund, things kind of get commingled, and if there's ever late changes to the budget...
Right.
...there have been some times when something really should have been attributed to water, and it ended up being attributed to the general side. Nothing of large magnitude, but I think it's good to do.
For good accounting practices.
It's cleaner.
Correct. I think that's something we should look into, setting that up. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your work from behalf of the town.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip to Mr. Hagerty.
And the work of our town accountant. Thank you.
Mr. Hagerty's been working all day. I think he has a very brief update he wanted to give us, so I'm going to skip to him before we get to the Main Street discussion. Mr. Hagerty, good evening.
Thank you for letting me come here tonight. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of quick things that are of interest. We held our third of a series of training sessions for town employees and elected and appointed officials last week. Our first one in October was on ethics, then the open meeting law, and this last one was on the public records law. We had 30 people attend this last session. We had 70 people attend the other two sessions. The significance of this last session is frankly, I asked the trainer to come out, an attorney, Angela Pacini from the Secretary of State's office, phenomenal, phenomenal trainer, very direct. Is, you know, there's a new clerk downstairs. I asked a lot of clerks, I asked a lot of people in this building how records are to be retained or maintained. How do you handle emails, texts, Twitter accounts, Facebooks, you name it? And I got so many different answers. And I picked up the phone and called the right people, and there you go. And it's very interesting what we don't know. There's so much misinformation about that. And we have an obligation for the public records law to retain and record that, and we're not doing that as a town. And we're not the only ones. So, and the interesting thing when Angela came out was to talk about conflicts between the laws as well, that she could not address some of these issues. So I'll be sending a, a request to Aldo, Attorney Aldo Cipriano, on these conflicts that she identified so we can come up with best practices that the town should follow. As far as the areas we are, we are not backing up, you know, the fact that we put something on a Facebook account, Facebook page, on a webpage, it's no different than putting it on a, a piece of paper. We have the same legal obligations to retain that information and make that available to somebody. If you send an email to somebody that has, you have the same, if you send the information via text versus an email, we have the same legal responsibility. So there's an awful lot of new things that are just evolving, and we'll be going to Aldo to try to address those so we can all follow the best practices. That's really what it comes down to. And the areas that we can address in terms of backing up and, and storing this information, it's not very difficult. It's not very expensive. So I'll submit some suggestions on how to address that to the, your town technology committee, and they can go from that. Finally, a couple of quick things. I don't want to, two quick things. This is mostly for the benefit of the people at home. They're going to be receiving a postcard from us, every dog owner in town. The dogs are the bane of my existence. It's, it's hilarious how much time we spend on this, just asking people to send us their emails so we can contact them. Finally, on a positive note, all of us that have moved to town, the first communication you had from the town of Southborough was get your checkbook out because you owe us some money. That's just the way it is. And, and again, getting back to dogs, the crazy stuff we, we lose there. We had no way to find out when somebody moved to town if they had a dog or not. We had no way of finding out the census stuff and, you know, vice versa when they moved out. So what we're doing is we're buying a mailing list of all the new movers to town. And we'll be contacting all the residences that move into town and advising them on the services that the town offers, what they need to know like in the first 30 days. It's just a positive thing. It's incredibly inexpensive. It's going to cost me less than $150 a year for the service. It's, it's, it's a no-brainer. And historically, going back the past eight years, we've never had more than 200 new households move into town. So it's, it's kind of an interesting set of information. So I will be reaching out to, I've already talked to Doreen in Recreation, Doreen Ferguson, about services we can advise people of, trying to get a handle on new family to town, the first 30 days, what do you need to know? You know, everything from the transfer station sticker to, you know, what, what matters to you. And we expect that we'll be able to get in contact with these new residents within, probably within two weeks of when they arrive in town. So it'll be timely. I don't want to include any commercial information in that. I'm just, I don't think we want to go down that road. But I will be reaching out to various organizations in town, all the sports organizations and so forth, to see what they would like to do and how they would move that on. And I'm going to have a meeting in January, once we get through the holidays, to try to get people together and brainstorm and see what we can figure out on that. So that's it. Thank you for letting me come here tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do it.
Appreciate your efforts, Jim. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for having me. Open houses, the forums for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Tim.
Main Street Design Working Group, project update. Good evening, Mr. Healy.
Chairman Rooney.
Thank you for-
Chairman of the board.
-gracing us with your presence this evening.
It's never easy following Mr. Hagerty either. So it's a tough act. To, to give a little background on, on how we got here tonight is about six months ago or so, we had our, we had concluded our work essentially, which was the, the review of the project recommendations to the Board of Selectment. And there's sort of that odd world between 25 and 75% in terms of the, the planning stages. But with our recommendations, it had moved past the 25% stage and it had, had tiptoed ever so closely to the 75% stage, which is a close-to-final document that then goes to the state. Your board asked us to stay on board, essentially, and keep interfacing with the, the engineers and with the DPW here in town. And to, there wasn't, I don't think there was a specific mandate to revisit potential recommendations that we had made, but, but we at least considered that as implicit as we went along, as, as either circumstances changed or additional information came forward or, or otherwise. In addition, there's, there's, we've referred to it a lot of times in our discussions over the last six months, since that 25% recommendation, uh, stage recommendation to move it to the 75% stage. There've been various things about timing that we've, that we've discussed and we've worked with DPW and the engineers on. There have been various things having to do with aesthetics. Things as simple as what should the crosswalks look like. And the number of, we don't get so granular as where newly planted trees. The interesting thing is there's going to be more trees at the end of this process than there are now. And I think our formal vote was for it to be a two-to-one replacement. But things like that, they, they are not required as part of the 75, but they are obviously things that are going to impact the project. So that we've been doing and will continue to do. And to the extent we feel necessary to report beyond to Ms. Galligan, to report to the board with a memo like she's done in this instance or otherwise, we'll do so. And obviously, if the board wants to hear from us at any time, you know, we're, we're happy to come in and, and give updates on, on, on the, the non-technical, non-75%, if you will, considerations that we're talking about and, and having back and forth with the engineers and, and with the, with the DPW, and still taking less so than, during the, the main part of the project, but still taking input from, you know, the community. And we expect that will continue as well. Now, that brings us to, to the, the, the update on the, the particulars of the project and some things that are part and parcel of the recommendation, the, the 75% stage, and the, the final recommendation that will go to the, to the state to actually start, not exactly shovels in the ground yet, but, but moving towards that stage. And Ms. Galligan's memo, the, her December 10 memo to the board lays out pretty well what our, what our discussions focused on. You may recall that in our recommendations, for the most part, and, and we had various tiers that we considered for what the force of our recommendations were. And we really tried, and, and for the most part, were successful, getting to recommendations that, that really reflected a consensus of the working group. There were a couple of items that, that, where there, we had recommendations, but we hadn't reached a consensus. It was, there were seven of us. It was four to three votes, or three, two votes and two abstentions or something like that, but they were not consensus. And we kept talking about those. And the three items, the bullet points, the first three bullet points, are three of those where we had not reached, two of the first two, actually, we had not reached consensus. The sec- the, the final one, we really hadn't talked about in any, to, to any great extent. So maybe I'll start with that one. And that is the installation of sidewalks on the west, west side of Marlborough Road. Basically, on the, at the, where the library is, the Route 30 Marlborough Road intersection. And so there was discussion, and, and all three of these, these bullet points, safety was the primary consideration that we ended up talking about. There's some convenience factors as well, but safety was, was the, the driving force. And so there was discussion. We had the, the DPW and the engineers educate us, go back and look at the extent of the, the, the project, and ultimately voted to recommend that a sidewalk be put as far as the project, as far as the state will allow us to extend that project up along Marlborough Road. The, the feeling being, I mean, obviously, you've got a parking lot there. But two things. Number one, it is, from a convenience standpoint and, and a barrier standpoint, it would be nice to have a sidewalk between the, the roadway and where an awful lot of people with an awful lot of kids park. Also, there is the, the, at least possibility, maybe even the likelihood, that at some point, the, there will be sidewalks extending farther up on Marlborough Road. Because there's a school there, there are neighborhoods there, and whether or not that makes sense. That's not something that's within the purview of this project, but since it serves a safety, safety function as both a barrier and, and in terms of convenience, and because it might be a, a stepping stone if and when there's a consideration for sidewalks farther up Marlborough Road, we voted to support that as part of, of a revised 75% report. That's number one.
Where does that sidewalk end in relationship to the crosswalk and the flashing light?
It doesn't get there.
Doesn't get there.
It does not get there. I, I don't think, and, and, and I'm not sure if we know exactly where the line is, but it's pretty close to where the parking lot ends.
Okay.
And if Ms. Galligan or the, the folks from the engineering firm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's right.
Is, is there a possibility to approach St. Mark's about extending that to that location and them funneling some costs to accomplish that?
I think that's a great idea. I, the one, the thing that, that was clear to us is that if there, if it goes beyond that, that it'll have to be, be paid for by the town or by the combination of a town and a, and a, and a private party, for instance, like St. Mark's. But the, but the project itself, we get some leeway off of the main drag that, that, that is being considered, but we can't get up to the flashing light.
Would it be premature to engage in a discussion with St. Mark's at this point?
My opinion, no. The, the only, not concern, but I guess question I would have, and maybe that's best for, put to Ms. Galligan or the, the engineers, is whether or not the, the, that would in any way impact the timing on the project. I suspect the answer to that is no.
Well, in order to provide sidewalks up to the flashing light, you're still going to need to provide the engineer-
Brian, you need a microphone, sorry. Sorry. You'd have to provide the engineering plans for them. And, and right now, for example, we only have topographical and property survey to the point where we end the project now. So we'd have to go out and gather more survey, more right-of-way information. So I would say that the answer to that, as far as the schedule goes, is going to be, it's going to impact it.
Could you put together a cost projection for that additional survey work and then the additional construction estimate? And then we could see if we can get some movement in, in, in that regard?
Sure. Yes, I can do that.
Again, with, with the considerations that, that drove us to, to recommend that, completely consistent with that. And that is that, again, there's, there's a school up there.
Right.
And there are, I think, continuing to grow residential communities up there, and sidewalks is a safety feature, obviously. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Finn, if you have some-
I think there's a little more detail that needs to be done, other than putting, continuing the sidewalk because you have another intersecting road onto 85 at that location. I think it's Common Street that comes all the way out, and there's some concerns about the design of that what might impact other areas of St. Mark's Drive and all of the other things.
And the follow-up with that, too, is that now you're taking an edge of a roadway and now you're putting a curb and a sidewalk, and it's now you're creating an actual formal edge. So that may cause problems with your drainage.
Yeah, but if you look at the big picture, I assume there's an interest in, obviously, an interest in the town. There'd be an interest in St. Mark's, given the fact that there's a crosswalk right there for their students and/or faculty that are walking down the street from across the street to be able to transverse down the street on a sidewalk. So I do think it's at least worth approaching and having the discussion with them. And if the engineering causes it to be a no-go, then, then at least we can have the discussion with them.
Right. We'd be nowhere, no, no place different than we are right now. So-
Would that be difficult, sir, to do?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, not at all. A good segue into the next area that we focused on, and that was the, the, east side of Route 85 between the, 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 the main intersection, the Route 30 intersection, and the entrance to the Woodward School. It's probably one of the top three or four topics that we had, that we spent time discussing over the course of time. Some of that had to do with the fact that there were, there were trees that were going to be impacted in the, the community house. But we had gotten past that for the, for our last recommendation. But after, after further discussion and after there, quite frankly, after the discussion about, about the reasons for having a sidewalk on the area near the library heading to the north, the, the arguments, and I had made many of them, quite frankly, against putting a sidewalk from Route 30 down to the Woodward School pretty much evaporated. And the, there still is some disagreement about exactly what the volume is going to be of use of that sidewalk. But it, it may well be that the volume is low right now for people walking along that part of the roadway because there's not a sidewalk. But more important than that is that, again, there's a school. There's the center of town. There's a library. There's another school that, where people use the golf course. And so it, it, it ended up very much carrying the day and formed a strong consensus in the working group to recommend as part of the, the 75 plan that that sidewalk be included in the project. All right? And then finally is the, the recommendation relating to, to parking along Main Street. And again, Ms. Galligan correctly captures what we voted on and what we are recommending. And there was not consensus when we had reached our previous stage. There were some folks who were very, on the, on the, on the working group, who were very much in favor of, of as many parking spaces as appeared feasible. There were other folks who anecdotally, primarily, had concerns about the intersection from a safety standpoint or otherwise. So we drilled down a little bit farther and looked at state, had the, again, the engineers and Ms. Galligan provide us with information about the, the, the state standards and the federal standards for safety at an intersection like that, given sightlines and the like. And those, these recommendations reflect those safety guidelines. It's, it's based entirely on sightlines from an intersection. And we, we-
The syntax, I don't like that. The, the, these recommendations do not contradict the safety guidelines, I think, is what you're-
These are consistent with the safety guidelines.
Correct. They don't reflect the guidelines. The guidelines don't suggest parking spaces.
No. No, 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 no. They, they, they reflect sightlines. They reflect sightlines.
Do additional parking spaces at this location contradict the guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we started to have discussion, once, once the, the, once the, the guidelines, and there's a, there's a pretty compelling demo that, that, that shows what they are. And we actually started to have discussion about, well, could we include this one? It's only, you know, it's, it's only half of the, of, of that parking space that would be impacted. And I actually think it was Ms. Sanaf who put the question to us. And, and that is, you know, we're doing a project that's, that's, that's driven by safety considerations, other things as well, but, but by safety considerations. We have state and federal guidelines for those safety considerations and not even addressing it from a liability standpoint, although I suspect that if you alter, if you, if you, if you go away from what, what, what guidelines are, there potentially are impacts for that, but that it didn't make any sense at all. And so our recommendation is consistent with the state and federal guidelines on sightlines at, at, at that type of intersection.
Let me ask you that, this. You said that this was not a majority position of the committee. What is the argument that we should build additional parking spaces that are in contravention to the standards?
I believe it is unanimous now.
Oh, it is?
That part of it was unanimous.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it had not been.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It had not been, yeah. It had not been when we had been discussing it earlier. And in some respects, I mean, it's, 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 it's our fault for not having drilled down earlier. But we did, and- But we did, and based on that, it, I mean, the argument is one of convenience, is one of business necessity, or if not business necessity, helpful to the business. There's two businesses there, obviously, the funeral home and the medical offices. And those were arguments that were very much part of our considerations and discussions up until we focused on the safety considerations. And I, and there's other folks from the committee here, they can, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but once we focused on that, it, there didn't seem to be any arguments of convenience or helpful to the business or otherwise that would justify taking a step back from safety. So those are, those are the three additional recommendations that are part and parcel of the 75% plan. The other things you'll see, and these are, again, I refer to them, they're more aesthetic, and I'll touch base with them because presumably folks are watching, and also, I'm sorry, Mr. Simeon.
If you're going on to the next set of bullets, I want to just clarify a couple of things. The parking spaces referenced in that first bullet are denoted as unmarked. What is that, I mean, what does that mean? Unmarked?
Really, the intent there was not to provide paint markings delineating the exact spots. And the reason for that is, and the, I'll use Common Street as an example, if you would have laid the parking spaces out and painted them according to the states, to the guideline, to the design standards, their 20-feet length, plus or minus. In all practicality, without that, those paint markings there, you can probably create more parking spaces than what you would have by those delineated with the paint markings. So the intent was to provide as much parking as possible. So, I mean, you could get more Priuses in that area, you know, if everybody's there with an SUV, it won't be as many parking spaces, but to create an open area.
Understood. Is the, is at least the open area demarked on one end and the other?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And in fact, and you'll see the painted funeral only, that is, that is closer to the corner.
Yeah.
It's closer to the corner, and that would be, it's unclear exactly what we would do for that. There was talk about doing it with lines, there was, there was talk about doing it with a slightly different surfacing, so that it was clear that it was not a parking space, but that during funerals, presumably, I guess, I think our discussion was, was just for funerals, not for wakes, that it could be, that that parking space could be used as well.
And that's not one of the three? It's three plus that one?
Correct.
And that meets the safety standards?
The safety standards.
Engineer and Mass dot, Mass Highway gonna approve that plan?
I wouldn't see a problem with it.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't think that, my recollection is we not, we did not see anything specific in safety plans, but, but it is, I don't want to characterize it as a compromise, but because it wasn't a compromise, it was, it was quite frankly, I think, an effort by us to, to, to address some of the concerns that were raised by, by business people in that, that area, and the understanding that, that allowing parking on an ongoing basis is very different than, than allowing parking in a situation when presumably traffic control is going to be there, or at least might be there, and where there is a particularly acute need for the additional space.
If there is no derogation of safety, I don't have an issue with it, but I think the notion that there will never be a car there except for at a funeral is folly. And that's not your fault.
No, we had that discussion about a number of different things, and I'm not gonna, just because I don't remember, but I can't remember who kept reminding us that all we can do is set the rules, all the town can do is set the rules, and then it falls on our public safety personnel, quite frankly, to enforce those rules. So, and that seemed like a reasonable answer.
Well, the property owner would have to enforce those rules, because it's being.
Well, each individual driving a car, presumably.
It's a public space.
But if it's, if we're approving it as funeral parking, and I believe you're even gonna, are you gonna write that on the location?
I think so.
Painted.
I think that's, that would be our expectation.
I would have confidence that the owner of the business establishment would see that no cars were parked there other than for funeral purposes.
I'm not suggesting it would be the owner's vehicles.
Well, I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Healy started out with. I was there the evening that the sightlines were identified and put on paper and handed out, and the conversation was going in two different directions, add them, not add them. And I did say that it, sitting at this table and being asked to approve something to satisfy any of us, just because we want to do it, I could not vote for that. So I'm just curious, everything that we've done meets the requirements of sightline clearance, so anyone leaving Middle Road can enter Route 30 with some level of confidence after the conversation that I sat through. The town's not assuming any liability, because we know something is wrong, but we're gonna do it anyway.
Correct.
Which is what you started to say.
Correct. And you might recall, we had a similar type of conversation about the entrance and egress from the public safety facility.
Correct. But the drawing was, the schematic of the street was handed out the evening that I was there showing in great detail what the engineer felt was inadequate, and what could be approved, as long as we're not doing something that does not meet the state requirement as far as sightline and safety.
Right.
Correct?
And, and our recommendation reflects that.
Okay, I have a problem with it.
You want to just finish up on your.
Oh, yeah, and those were, those are, those are items, and again, just informationally, I mean, I already talked about the fact that, and, you know, having, having done this for months, I was actually a little bit surprised, because so much of our conversation was about, you know, preserving trees, and that, that obviously there's gonna be some maturation that's required by those trees, but there's gonna be a net gain of two to one along the, along the project, which at least, I think everybody that's weighed in has, has indicated that they think that's a good thing. The, the two other items having to have to do with the sidewalks themselves, and there's some aesthetic aspect to that, but the vote has reflected in there that the, again, consensus by the working group was for asphalt sidewalks up to the face school formal entrance from the beginning of the project. And they're fine, they're, they, they do the job, and, but they're not, they, at least our perception, and I think that a general perception, is that, is that they are a little bit less durable and a little bit less aesthetic than the concrete sidewalks. And so our informal delineation is that the downtown area starts at about Fay School and runs for the length of the project, and so the recommendation is, is for the sturdier, both in terms of traffic, and although I think that's a pretty close call, but, but the better aesthetic from Fay, from the Fay Park driveway up through Park Street. And that's the recommendation. Again, that's not, that's something, quite frankly, that could change. That doesn't have to be part of the, of the, of the 75% process, but since we felt we had enough information and we took the vote and, and, I don't know, maybe we're getting along better, but we're reaching consensus more easily than we did at some points during the rest of the project, so.
Let me just say, although not everyone, and in fact, quite a few people were opposed to the formation of this committee at the get-go, I think you've done a tremendous job in, in building consensus on a, an issue in town that was polarizing at best, and you've, and your efforts to build consensus has been throughout this project, and it's reflected not just in the 25% plan and the 75% plan, and I thank you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for your efforts. I know you've worked hard, your committee has worked hard, they've been dedicated and committed, and this project owes its entirety to your committee, so thank you on behalf of the committee.
Appreciate that.
On behalf of the board. Let me ask you some very specific questions. What items do you need a vote from the board on this evening?
The, the parking, those, those three bullet items. The recommendation for parking.
First three?
The first three bullet items.
Okay. So before we get to the parking issue, I think, which, at least in my impression, may generate some additional discussion among the audience, can we take them in reverse order? Let me ask this question to the audience. Is anyone here to talk about the last two bullet items? You asked for the last two?
With respect to parking?
No, sir. Install the sidewalk on the east side of Route 85, and to install the sidewalk on the west side of Marlborough Road, those two items. Okay. Does anyone have any further discussion on that? Does anyone in the board have any questions on that? Mr. Simeon, a motion with respect to those two items.
Yeah, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the changes to the working group's recommendations specifically to now indicate that we will install a sidewalk on the east side of Route 85, south of Route 30 to Woodward School, and we will install a sidewalk on the west side of Marlborough Road, north of Route 30 to the limits of the project.
Those are second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that, Mrs. Fannin, you're in favor?
Yes.
All right, now, let's talk about the parking. Before I open it up to the board, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the parking issue? Yes, sir.
Ms. Rooney, do you need me here, or am I all set?
I would like you there.
We do, we do there, Mr. Healy.
This close.
For about, for about four or five more years, Ms. Healy. Don't get any ideas.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Falk, I'm an attorney at Myrick O'Connell in Worcester.
Is it F-A-L-K?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Steve and Nancy Morris, owners of the Morris Funeral Home, located at 40 Main Street. And, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, just as a point of order, I'm not convinced that there's authority tonight under the open meeting law to take votes. The, the meeting agenda suggests that the board would simply be receiving an update on the project rather than taking votes with respect to the recommendation.
So noted. Why don't you get on to your substantive.
Sure. Steve and Nancy have participated in the working group's process, but feel as though they have not been heard. Frankly, this plan threatens the existence of their business. Morris Funeral Home has served the Southborough community since 1952. Like many small businesses in downtown throughout the Commonwealth, the Morris's rely on street parking to provide families and visitors with access to their services. This plan drastically reduces on-street parking along Main Street and Common Street, leaving families and visitors to the Morris Funeral Home with few options. We urge you to consider the impact this plan will have, not just on the Morris Funeral Home, but other community institutions in the area. It's hard to imagine that this project will ultimately improve the town when institutions, small businesses, and the safety of their patrons are jeopardized by diminished parking availability. It's hard to imagine that the town would treat its Main Street as simply a means to accommodate and control traffic, brushing aside the impacts on small businesses. The Morris's were reluctant to bring on counsel, but feel as though they have been left with no alternatives. Earlier tonight, we heard you welcome a new business to town. The Morris's urge you to continue welcoming existing businesses in town. They don't want to see their family six decades of service to the community end in this way. They do not want to fundamentally alter the character of their property or the historic home they own next door. They do not wish to consider their legal rights, based on harms to their property values and their livelihood. We urge you to hold off on approving this plan and work with the Morris's and other small businesses in town on a plan that works for all stakeholders on Main Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I find it hard to believe that the Morris's feel that they, counsel, if you could remain up there, I have some questions for you. Could not believe that they've not been heard by the Main Street Working Group. I've been at many of those meetings, and if anything else, they've been all inviting to anyone who wants to participate. That being said, you heard the earlier comments relative to site plan and compliance with both federal and state guidelines. First of all, question one, you say that their parking is being drastically reduced. How, give me the numbers as to how it's being reduced.
My understanding in front of the home right now accommodates at least nine cars. They'll be down to four.
From nine cars down to four. Mr. Healy, is that your understanding? It's nine to four?
This is where.
Unmarked.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
Let me ask you.
That seems dramatic. I don't believe there are nine parking spaces that you can fit in front of the funeral home that are being, in other words, that are being impacted here. I don't think that's the right number.
Let me ask you this. One of the reasons for not marking the parking was to accommodate as many additional cars for the funeral home as possible?
Right. And I guess I will say that if, if, if you are going to include nine spots for the space that was there, they certainly are not legal spots that are the 20 feet long. If, if you were going to include the, the, the number of cars you could squeeze into the space that's gonna be allocated, that's gotta be at least five or six.
If I may, so you, let me address that to counsel. You mentioned, you just said that those are not legal spots. Do you disagree with that? Are they, are there nine legal spots that are associated to the home right now?
I don't know. All I know is that during events, nine cars may be accommodated in that area right now.
And those, those spots are owned by whom?
Well, they're in the public way, their town.
Let me ask you this, counsel. You would agree, would you not, that the town should not construct a roadway which is in violation of state or federal regulations? You'd agree with that as a general premise?
I would agree as a general premise.
Is there a way, or are you able to propose a way in which these, this volume of cars that existing is able to park there now complies with the federal and state sight guidelines?
I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but what I do know is, we know spaces are gonna be reduced in that area, and there doesn't appear to be a plan in place to accommodate that parking. The people park along the street now, and they do for not just the Morris Funeral Home, but other institutions in the area. And those cars are there now, they're gonna need somewhere to go. When this redesign is done, we'll be left with a Main Street where no one can park to access the institutions that are there.
Well, I wouldn't say no one can park. There's been some accommodation, there's been an effort to accommodate it, but more importantly, I think there's been an effort and a drive to make sure that whatever the design is, is in compliance with federal and state law. And I think, from what I heard from Mr. Healy and from my attendance at some of the meetings, they have made every effort to incorporate as many possible parking spots as they can to be in compliance with the federal and state law. So the quandary, I believe, that this board is in, or you're asking this board to take on, is to perhaps not vote in this, and in the future, vote on a design which is not compliant with federal and state law, which I think is a difficult thing to ask.
I'm not suggesting that at all. I understand the requirements. My concern is that there's no alternative in place to do something with the fact that right now, businesses and institutions use the street for parking. Spaces are gonna be reduced, and there's nowhere for them to go.
I mean, there's nobody on this board that wants to make a decision which is gonna impact the Morris Funeral Home, a business that's been in town for so long. I mean, it's, it's not something that this board wants to do. At the same time, this board cannot vote in favor of the design that's in violation of federal and state regulations.
We're not suggesting that you do, but we're suggesting that some alternative be considered, or at least some plan be put in place for how we're gonna do that.
What type of alternative?
The Morris's right now can't rely, they can't rely on public spaces, private spaces, and other properties. They're, they're, because of the nature of the business and the location, and the fact that it's an historic business, rely on street parking, like so many other businesses do in other, in other communities.
What alternatives? I mean, I understand their position, but what alternatives are you proposing that have not been considered?
We think it would be helpful to have a conversation with the town in terms of where, where may funeral patrons, visitors, and families go when there, when there's less street parking availability? Where else are they to go? Some sort of a plan to deal with the fact that you have a huge influx of cars downtown during those events, that's been going on for decades, and it's not gonna stop happening just because we reduce parking along the street.
Mrs. Fannin?
I'm not, I've spoken with the property owner and suggested several things to the individual, so I'm not gonna say publicly what they are, but I will say that I thought that he, I suggested to him strongly that he have conversations with the working group, with the town DPW superintendent, and attend meetings with the engineer, as far as preventing any future remedies that he personally might come up with, not to interfere with this road design as far as a road cut. I don't know if that even happened, or even was suggested to anyone to look at, so he could secure that road cut if necessary onto Route 30. The property owner owns the abutting piece of property. There's land that they could develop their own parking on their own property, like this board had a discussion with another property owner in this town that has a business restricting parking on that site that that individual owned. restricting parking on that site that that individual owned probably two weeks ago. We have concerns with residents downtown that own individual businesses. My concern about dedicating parking for a particular use, our phones are going to ring off the hook from any small business downtown saying, "I want that identified as my parking." We're trying to address the needs of this establishment, but I think the owner of the property has some obvious remedies that they could take. They have two parcels of property, rental incomes from both, I believe. It's a home business, one minute, Nancy, and it would be nice to see what they could do on their own property.
So you'd prefer a parking lot right downtown in place of the green space that's there now?
If I had a business, I would do whatever I could do to maintain that business, and I have owned business properties in other towns. There is a level of responsibility each of us have as far as securing the rights of our own businesses. I'm not saying that's the only alternative, but we also have a safety issue that we have to address as a board to protect this funding and protect the rights of all of us.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Shay?
So, the, first, I would just like to note the number of meetings that Mr. Morris, Mr. and Mrs. Morris did attend for the working group. They were there at many of those meetings advocating on their behalf. One of the things that did happen at our meeting last August, and the Morris's did not attend that one, and that is really going back to the discussion of the modifications to the number of parking spaces. Plans at that time, going into that meeting in August, showed three spaces just to the west of Middle Road in front of Dr. Stone's property. That is the meeting where that sightline conflict was introduced to our committee, and we needed to take action when that conflict was presented to us. It wound up changing the recommendations that the committee had come up with as a consensus at first. Unfortunately, that vote took place when the Morris's weren't there. That vote was not taken in any way to be insensitive to the needs of their business. It was to guarantee that this project is engineered properly. And, you know, I, I fully understand that it's not just the Morris's and their business that's impacted, but they are in business because of the service that they provide to the community as a whole. And it's all citizens, taxpayers, it's everybody in town who need to use the services that the Morris's provide that are ultimately impacted by that. And I think our committee has done the best that we can to maximize the number of parking spaces in that vicinity, but also guaranteeing that the road is engineered the way that it needs to be engineered. And if there's any way moving forward, there's any help that, that they need with temporary parking spaces on days of events or temporary traffic pattern adjustments to accommodate those, I will do anything I can to help them as long as I'm sitting at this seat here. But I just want to be clear that that was carefully considered by the committee. It was not made in a manner that was insensitive to the needs of, of anybody in town, but was done so to ensure that the project moved forward the way that it needed to be designed.
Mr. Semino?
Just a quick question about the bullets. The last two bullets, the first of the last two bullets, about adding a parking space along the frontage on 36 Main. There's a note that that would be voted prior to tonight's meeting. I don't know if, I'm not sure. I don't care whether it was or not. The question is, is that, I assume, an attempt to at least partially address this issue? To, 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 to have a new parking space where one doesn't currently exist?
I'm not sure if I, it depends on, on whose perspective you're looking at it. From, from our, from, I suspect that, that was, that was thrown into the discussion by Mr. Morris as a possibility of an additional parking space. From our perspective, it was looked at through the same prism, and that is, where does it fit in the safety spectrum? And the, the information we've gotten back is that from a safety standpoint, you can't do that. And so that's, again, it's consistent with, with, with what Mr., Mr. Shay said. I mean, the, the tenor of our discussions changed dramatically when it moved from anecdotal to state and federal requirements. And I, I just, you know, we as, we as a board couldn't recommend to the town that they do something that, A, could potentially expose them to liability, but more importantly, would put people at risk from safety. I mean, there have been accidents there, but, but this isn't, there are going to be accidents even if you have the safest intersection in the world. But to, but to take a step back from a safety standpoint and, and, and then have an accident there, that's not something that, that we were willing to recommend.
Do I infer the same, it's a little less connected, but relocating the hydrant at the common, do I infer that that is another different attempt to also address this issue?
I'm not sure if that's true, but, but...
I'm getting a no, I'm getting a head shake no from behind you.
Yeah. I think that's, that, that, that is more, I don't want to say convenience. I, I, it was a suggestion, and again, just in terms of the way we've been dealing, I mean, our first stage now is, is we went to the, to the fire chief there and what makes sense for them.
So these last two items, I don't know if you voted on them or not, but you're not, you're not, your committee's not recommending?
We are not recommending them.
All right.
Anything further?
Not for me.
I have a follow-up question, though.
Yes.
Installing concrete sidewalks from Fay School to Park Street. The north side of the road will be done in concrete as well.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, I, I'm not sure what you, you are asking us to do. I, I, I asked you initially, and I think you responded appropriately, that you're not asking us to vote on a design or a scheme that's in violation of federal or state law. So, and, and I, in all honesty, sir, I wouldn't call for a vote in that regard. You've asked us to have the Morris's be heard, and, and in your opinion, they have not been heard fully, but I'm not sure what more the town can do, other than they get a commitment from this board that we are going to do everything in our power not to impact their business by this design. That's the best that we can do, but we can't vote on a design which is in violation of federal and state law. I asked you relative to, to alternatives, and I'm not sure I got an answer. If I did, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't understand it. So let me ask you again, is there, are there any alternatives that you're aware of based upon the existing design that could be implemented that would not be in violation of federal or state law?
I don't, but I'm also, I don't know whether we have maxed out park, on-street parking based on federal state requirements.
Let me ask our consultant that same question. I, I assume with this is, sir, this has occupied a, a, a large amount of the committee in your time relative to the parking in this area. Can you just address whether there are, in fact, in your opinion, other alternatives that would allow for additional parking in this area while at the same time being in compliance with state and federal law? And you need to get, stand up and take a microphone to respond. Thank you.
The, the idea of where we came up or what we came up with was, was the basis of a consensus that we worked a long time for with, with everybody in the community to do. Is there another alternative, to kind of echo what's already been said, from a completely safety standpoint, we, we stand behind what's on the plans right now? Is there an option to do, gain spots somewhere else? I, I would say yes, but I mean, it's, it would be at the detriment of other property owners.
Mr. Morris, Mrs. Morris, I, I don't know if you want to say anything before we vote, or you want to just rely on your counsel, but I can assure you that it's not something that the board takes lightly. Do you, do you care to speak directly to us?
At the last, at the, in the, let's see, this is, in the November meeting, no, the October meeting, I went there and I spoke to the, the review, the board here, and I asked many questions, and I got, and as you, you stated that I got all my answers. I, I didn't get an answer that night. I asked about bump outs. I asked about parking. I asked about the parking on Common Street. And they, the board, they just came back and said, "It is what it is. We've been through this." The, the, Common Street, it's not just me, the church, the pilgrim church over here uses it, and the, and the library uses it. And I don't understand the reasoning why that design has eliminated parking there. If you were out there on Sunday, there were 18 cars parked from the top of Common Street down to the library. It wasn't for my business. It was for the church. They had church services. And I can just imagine what it's going to look like Christmas Day. It, it seems like I'm brushed aside. It's too bad, Mr. Morris, you have a business there. I spoke with people at the, at the library. They said they were on the same page as I was, but they had talked to, and when I went back, I tried to get their email addresses. They wouldn't give them out. I talked to the director there, and he said that they had spoken with Karen and whoever else, I don't know, but they said that they have spoken to them. I don't know what their, what they had, what they had said to Karen or to you folks, or if they had sent you any letters or anything. The pilgrim church was on board with us until, I, I guess, last night when there was one of the committee members here went to the church and presented their side of it and, and without one of us being present. And we got emails today saying that, that they were on board with these folks here. It, it, it just seems that we're being pushed aside, that it's, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's all us, but I don't believe it is. I believe that the town needs parking, the, the library says they need parking. They have events there two or three nights a week. They're, they're dying for parking. The pilgrim church is, is, has got things there. I tried to point out to the, to the committee that there was a, a day in September where there was a funeral service at the, at the St. Mark's Church. There was, Town Hall was open. I had a funeral service going. The pilgrim church had things going. And there wasn't a parking spot around for anybody. I, I was fortunate. I knew the directors that were running the funeral home, the funeral at the St. Mark's Church. I spoke with them, and we coordinated, making sure their people didn't interfere with mine and my people didn't interfere with them. The parking, the, the town is getting bigger, and you're eliminating parking. It, it, it doesn't make sense to me. I, I don't know. Heritage Day. I asked the board, I said, "Did anyone go to the Memorial Day or Veterans Day or Heritage Day?" And only one member went. And they, and the parking was all west of 85. It was parked, cars all up Pilgrin, uh, uh, Common Street and from 85 all the way to Fay School. And they would have been beyond Fay School if Fay School didn't put the, 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 their own sidewalks in. I, I just don't understand why, why we're trying to eliminate parking when people are dying for it. I, I'm just beyond myself with this. If I had known that they were going to have private meetings, I, I wouldn't have wasted my time going to all the, the public ones, and they could have sat down and told me what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other further discussion? Mr. Phillips?
Hi, thanks.
Evening.
Evening, everybody. As, as a member of the, the working group, I wanted to chip in my own perspective on this issue as well. For starters, I, I understand, I mean, the reason we're talking about this all is because this is the biggest trade-off and probably the toughest trade-off of this whole project. The federal guidelines are very strict, and in a lot of places where we currently support parking, we can't, we can't fit it there, and the federal guidelines, which either means taking somebody's property or getting rid of, rid of parking. And so it's, it's a difficult issue. To, to speak to the Middle Road issue in particular, we, we did see a red line plan, and I, and, and, and the, the net outcome of, of the vote on that was to, I mean, what we have now is, we, we took away two spots to the, if, if you're coming out Middle, Middle Road, we took away two spots to the left and the one spot to the, to the right, which is now proposed to be striped for funeral parking. And it did, so you have 20-foot bump outs now on each side of Middle Road in this plan coming out. So I, I don't think that, I think that this is plenty safe, even with, with a striped funeral parking spot, and it's a huge improvement over what's there now. So I don't think we're talking about the minimal plan that would meet, that would meet guidelines here. This was a, a very conservative plan to make sure that we had sightlines coming out of Middle Road. So my, my primary, I guess, I don't agree that the board has not taken these, these have obviously been a, the committee, these, these have been very big. There's been a lot of discussions, and I think that the committee has listened hard to the concerns the Morris's have. At the same time, this plan has been in flux. And so while I, while I believe that the committee has listened very hard to the Morris's, I, I can understand why they might feel they haven't been listened to. While they were on vacation in August, they lost three parking spots. Within the last two meetings, we've, there's been a proposal to move the hydrant around on their property and to move, to move poles onto their property within the last two meetings on a project that's been around for 10 years. And, and this, this week, I mean, I felt like we've been making very good progress. I was dismayed to see a memo from the, from the, the DPW superintendent, which included a screen capture purporting to be of their Facebook pages and using that to make an argument about, about, about parking. I think this has unfortunately become a very personal issue, and I understand the Morris's frustration. I, but to get back to the main issue, I think that, that really, we have been working hard to find more opportunities for parking here, and I believe that we should continue to do it. The biggest negative trade-off of this, of this, of this project as a whole is going to be the loss of, of convenience people have when they come for major events. And there are businesses and churches and town events in this area. I think we've, we've tried to do the best we can to make it here, but I, I hope that this is an issue that, that the Board of Selectmen will be sensitive to, whether it, whether it's in finding alternative options that, that, to, to make it easier to construct additional parking or taking hard looks at really, you know, we've been down to the space by space. Do we need this space? What can we do with this? And I think that that needs to continue, that it's, that it's a focus. And the more parking we can manage to squeeze out of this design by, by hopefully minor changes without compromising safety, the better.
Phillips, I can ask you a question. Is, is my analysis correct that with this newer design, the funeral home is losing, quote unquote, at most four, but probably three parking spots?
I would guess directly in front of their property, but we're also to, starting at 36 Main Street and going on eastward, all of that existing parking is also going away in part, as part of this plan.
Because we're going to put sidewalks there, correct?
It has to do, I've been told that, that it has to do with the widening of the intersection as it, as it approaches, that it needs to preserve lines and, and things like that. So really, this, this parking on Main Street proper, the parking to the left and right of Middle Road is the only parking that will remain in this whole area under development, to my understanding. So I'm, in conclusion, I just want to ask that we, that we all take this issue seriously and, and, and hopefully that, that we can kind of, you know, find a way to work this out that, that does the best we can to satisfy everybody's needs here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Morris? You just need to come back. Sorry, I apologize for the inconvenience.
I just want to be able to answer Mrs. Faniff's question or discussion we've had. I did bring it up before the, the committee and the engineers at the last meeting about putting parking in. Nancy and I have taken on an application for a demo of the property at 36 Main Street. I know that'll fall on, it'll be a difficult situation there because the house there is built before 1900, and the historical is going to not like that at all, I don't think. But I did talk to the Karen and the engineer. They brought, they brought this to my attention years ago. About... years ago, about the state sometimes possibly, when parking is taken away from a business, the state will come in and help finance or help put in a parking lot for an existing business. I've never gotten an answer back on that.
I think the conversation needs to continue with the DPW superintendent and the engineers. I don't have the answer, Steve, but I'm glad you're having those discussions.
I just want to let you know that I did pinpoint, I did tell them that I would use the existing driveway at thirty-sixth Main Street if I was to put a parking lot in, it wouldn't be necessary to have a cutout. I don't need to lose any more parking than I already am going to. So, the discussion has been made, we're trying to go forward on that. It's just that I'm just trying to get you folks to understand that it isn't just me that needs the parking on Main Street or Common Street, that you should take another look at the Common Street anyways, and how it's cut and why you're eliminating parking, I don't know.
That's why I suggested to protect your business rights by making sure you can get a road cut onto Route Thirty if necessary, and those discussions should take place. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Boland?
Yes, Mr. Boland.
Hi, Bill Boland, thirty-five East Main Street. There is a way that Mr. Morris briefly touched on to add more parking in this area, or to keep from reducing more parking, and that's on Common Street. There's a drastic, people aren't really addressing that there's a drastic reduction of parking on Common Street. Do you, Brian, by any chance have the drawing? That might show. A typical Sunday, which occurred this weekend, there's church services going on, there may be some other things, there were fourteen cars parked from the library up Common Street. There were cars parked most of the way down St. Mark's Street, both directions from Common Street. The town hall parking lot was full, in front of pilgrim church, anywhere around there, people were parked, and it wasn't even Christmas, it wasn't Memorial Day, it wasn't Heritage Day, another typical time. Ms. Gallagher, if I may, through the chairman, do you know how many parking spaces theoretically are left on Common Street after the redesign?
Between nine and eleven.
So, you know, you have probably a reduction of five parking spaces as well on Common Street with a bump out at the top and a bump out at the bottom. The library uses those spaces, some of us may have parked there during a candidate's night, during another presentation of the library, they have a parking lot in the back, but if there's something going on in town, they need additional parking. And the parking that I saw Sunday and other Sundays is typical of a Sunday when there's church service is going on, and typical when there's a wake of average size at the funeral home. So, you can look at the parking on Common Street again, which doesn't come down to the safety factors of at the end of Middle Road. It's more aesthetic, it's to make a wider turn, you know, we like to go to these ninety-degree turns now that make it more difficult to negotiate getting in and out of streets, and you can certainly bring back about four or five parking spaces on Common Street by revisiting that. Thank you, unless anyone had a question.
Let me ask the consultant, sir. Mr. Boland says that there can be additional parking on Common Street if the design is tweaked. What are your thoughts on that?
Some of the things we also look at as far as laying out parking spaces is how far parking spaces are from the intersection of streets, how far they are from crosswalks, how far they are from hydrants and whatnot.
Well, let me ask you some specific questions. Can there be additional parking on Common Street that would be in compliance with federal and state regulations?
We'd have to take a look at that, I couldn't give you that answer right now.
I'm sorry, were you going to continue with your answer before I interrupted you?
No, but the other thing I was going to say, I was going to address Mr. Morris's concern about the issue of possibly obtaining some state funding for the building of a parking lot.
Yeah, why don't you do that offline? I mean, there's no need to discuss that at this point with us.
So, you will look into that issue on whether or not, okay, thank you.
Desiree Aslobekian, one thirty-seven Woodland Road. Who would thought that I'd agree with Bill Boland? But I do. My main concern with this isn't to side with one business or one particular organization over another. I want to say that over the past eighteen to twenty-four months, we're approaching two years, I think, since the Main Street Working Group was formed at a town meeting, I think they've done a lot of great vetting, a lot of good work. Sure has come a long way from ten years ago, two thousand and seven, and a lot of fiascos that occurred back then. But my biggest concern with this issue is surrounding the establishments and the businesses that are in this area. You have funeral home, you have churches, you have a library, you also have a community house that, if I understand correctly, is eliminating parking on Main Street altogether. These are huge community institutions where so many different events take place, not just one at one location on a Tuesday and one at one location on a Wednesday, multiple things are going on at these, all several locations all at once. And who's your biggest target population to many of these events? Senior citizens. And what really strikes me is that you are now asking municipal lots such as the library lot, Woodward School Lot, to act as the main place for parking, which from four o'clock to eight o'clock at night when wakes happen, when events at the library happen, is when it's dark out six months a year. And that's when you're asking, you know, an elderly population, families with small children, to park at these lots that are so far away from where the events are actually going to take place. That, as a resident, is what concerns me the most, is disenfranchising certain residents just, you know, just to satisfy some state and federal requirements without having additional plans in place. Has this board or has other boards considered other areas in downtown to create more municipal parking? Particularly when you're taking them away from such large event spaces like the community house. The community house has very little parking in the back, yet they host events quite frequently for large numbers of people. I think what ultimately is going to happen is you're going to have a lot of illegal parking, you're going to put the public safety at risk in that regard, and if your main concern is to, you know, increase public safety and follow standards, you're going to have a lot of illegal parking, you're going to put the police in a bad situation. I've just been alerted with Code Red that we've had three burglaries on my road in the last three weeks, but now we're going to, instead of hunting down burglars, we're going to have to, you know, enforce street parking. I think our priorities are typically in the wrong place in this regard. And lastly, my question is, how, what is the, perhaps this is for Mr. Purple through the chairman, what is the appropriate way for me to request Ms. Gallagher's email that captured a Facebook post of the Morris Funeral Home? I don't necessarily know whether that would be appropriate for a town employee to be sending.
They captured what?
A Facebook post of Morris Funeral Home. I guess it was revealed that Ms. Gallagher circulated some propaganda in the last twenty-four hours.
I didn't hear anything about circulating propaganda.
I heard it from a gentleman on Main Street.
Well, whatever, I can't address the circulation of propaganda because I'm unaware of it, and I'm not going to engage in that.
Well, how do I go, where do I file to get that?
You've filed them before, you can file a public records request with Mr. Purple.
Through Mr. Purple. Okay, I will.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
With regards to the parking on Main Street as opposed to any tangential issues? Yes, ma'am?
Susan Bows, twenty-eight Lattice Quama Road and a member of the Main Street Design Working Group. I'd like to make a comment about people talking about all this parking. All this parking that people are doing on Main Street, they're parking on the sidewalks. And we actually talked with all the people for the section of Main Street from Route Thirty to Lattice Quama Road on the south side, they said they wanted parking. We said, okay, we can give you parking there, but you won't have a sidewalk, you can have one or the other. And they chose a sidewalk, they did not want parking. So, I think when people say there are all these legal parking places, people are parking on sidewalks now.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, you're going to close out this discussion, and then we're going to vote.
My name is John Wilson, I live on Four Middle Road, and I'm not pointing out something that everybody here doesn't know, but I just thought I'd say it one more time, and that is, in this general area, probably the size of half a dozen football fields, we have a town hall, we have a Memorial Day celebration, we have a Veterans Day celebration, Morris's Funeral Home, Heritage Day, pilgrim church, St. Mark's Church, the library, Santa, Doc Stone and Fay School. When any one of these organizations have something big going on, there's not adequate, none of them provide adequate parking for their own people. It's just something that I'm sure everybody knows, but it's worthwhile pointing out. But our job was to take the design, or take the original scraps of the one mile of Main Street, and listen to the designers and try to make that road fit the guidelines, as Marty Healy has mentioned, to the best that we possibly could. And also, I think we did the best we could in looking at the parking issues, particularly from Morris's Funeral Home. And at one time, across the street over here, in front of Fay School buildings, there were parking spaces that were not going to be part of the project, and we reconsidered that, and we added them back in, and we have done, I think, the best we could to follow the guidelines and do everything we could here. And one final point, at many of the functions that do take place, I've taken, because I live right across the street, I have taken a little look around and seen other parking. For example, except when things happen at the library, the library parking lot is not used, well, maybe Heritage Day and Santa, but not for other events. And as I pointed out the other night, and I'm not trying to be funny because I think this is a truism, if any of these people that pack around here that have to go to events, if they were going to a Patriots game and could pack this close to Gillette Stadium, they'd think that they were an important person. But when they pack around here and have to walk a hundred yards to get to something, they think that they should be able to pack closer. And finally, I don't think, unless somebody has a miracle cure, I don't think that there is land around here to add sufficient parking for all of these events. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I neglected to mention that I am on the Main Street Working Group.
Thank you, sir. So, the, I believe the remaining issue and the remaining motion would be on your first bullet, Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Is that correct? Mr. Semino?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board of selectmen adopt the alternative recommendation of, the updated recommendation of the Design Working Group.
It's got to be a sign about something. Wait till I actually say it. Who knows what's going to happen?
To add three, sorry, to add parking along Main Street at Middle Road, three unmarked spaces and a painted, quote, funeral-only, unquote, space east of Middle Road, and five unmarked places west of Middle Road.
Second. Mr. Shea, second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I share your frustration, Mr. Rooney, with, and it's nobody's fault, but with the current lack of alternatives here within the purview of the project, I believe there are alternatives, both public and private, outside the purview of this project, that I certainly will make a point to see that we pursue down the road.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Now I can leave?
Yes, you can leave. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Semino, don't go far because we're going to start right up here. Mr. Semino, don't go far because we're going to start right up here. Okay. No, I don't want a break. You ready, Brian?
Ready, Brian?
You ready?
Sure.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Ballantyne, debt presentation.
So, we thought this would be an appropriate time since we're talking about the public safety building that probably none of you have heard about, but that we are looking at, to talk about debt and the costing of that project. For people that don't know, there are a number of options out there, I think the board has been briefed, that are under consideration for financing. We have waited till this point to tackle some of the finance issues only because some of the options have been up in the air, and obviously, the actual design and the details of the project are still under consideration. So, this certainly isn't the end of the conversation, but, you know, we'll just give a quick view, and I think it's appropriate that the auditor was here tonight and sort of touched on some of the, some of the quick issues that I'll be touching on. As many of you know, the advisory committee also has a subcommittee on debt that has been meeting and doing some other financial projections. And ironically, I think we've sort of arrived at the same point in some of our conclusions, although from two different perspectives. So, without further ado, we'll just run right through this. And just a quick definition of what is debt and, you know, what does the town do when they want to do a large project? Well, we issue bonds. There are several types of bonds out there. Most of them, or many of them, the town has never had to, you know, engage in. The most common is a general obligation bond, which is listed here. Obviously, it's a government's pledge to pay back money that we're borrowing. It's a loan, nothing more really than that over a period of time. Most of the laws dealing with this and dealing with the bonds are state law, so they are all tax exempt, which is an IRS regulation nationwide, but as far as what type of projects can be covered, for how long, sort of the details of each bond, that is the state of Massachusetts that sets those rules. So, debt capacity, we actually have a limit on what we can borrow for the town, it's called debt capacity, set through state statute. But in simple terms, a community can borrow five percent of its equalized valuation. Obviously, that's about ninety-eight million for the town of Southboro, we're probably never going to be close to there in my lifetime, hopefully. So, we, you know, it's an issue that someone like me knows, but for the rest of the community, it's probably, at least right now, a non-issue. So, debt on larger projects are typically done in two-step processes, and we haven't been through this in a while. We did it in the late nineties and early two thousands with the school process, but you basically take out short-term notes throughout the project, and you issue permanent bonds towards the end of the project, longer term. permanent bonds towards the end of the project. Longer-term projects kind of require that as a cash flow. You might borrow a third of it, a half of it, as the project goes on. And typically, the short-term notes are very cheap. We just borrowed for the recreation lights, which was a short-term note, and it was, I think it was just under a percent that they're charging right now. So it's very cheap. When you do do the larger notes, you know, the market sort of decides it. But, you know, 3% to 4% now is certainly within the range of where you'd find that type of, type of interest rate. So that's pretty much the process of how we will do the borrowing. When you actually, when you actually borrow the permanent funds, you can do it as what they call level principal payments, or level payments. Level payments basically are, you know, in the case of the Public Safety Building, might be $1,002,000 a year over 20 years. And it's basically $1,002,000. It's close, very close to that even amount every year. The town administrator, myself, have sort of looked at the Public Safety Building unofficially. And it seems like a level payment-type structure would be the best for the town right now. A level principal payment, a little less interest you pay over the life of the loan, however, it's sort of higher payments at the beginning of the note, which is, can be, you know, can be a burden on the tax base. So current and historical debt, this is no secret that our debt has been declining over the years. The auditor, Mr. Frayer, alluded to this. So the last five years, I just picked out and just, we've seen about $880,000 come off the annual tax levy debt. So 10 years, it would be up to about, just under $1 million. So this is a lot of annual money going out the door that is coming off the books. If no new projects were approved, another $721,000 would be eliminated the next five years. So we're talking a lot of money now that have coming off the, you know, our obligations. In FY21, absent new debt, the annual debt expense would go from over $3 million to $300,000. Most of that, again, is school debt that the auditor mentioned. So the, from '96 to 2005, about that 10-year period, we issued almost $47 million in debt. And on a shorter term, from 2000 to 2005, we issued $28 million. So the $46 million, less the reimbursement from the schools, was about, was about $18 million. And that was back, you know, again, you're now talking over, well over 10 years ago. And it doesn't include the Algonquin Project, which was a large project at the time for $25 million, split among the member communities. The town has one temporary loan pending at this time, and two loans due to be acted on. The recreation lights, as I spoke about, the fire department truck, which we haven't acted on quite yet, that'll probably be in the spring, and the 911 field, which we have authorized, but we have not taken any action on pending further discussions. So all of these loans, none are going to be funded out of general tax levy dollars, we don't think. The recreation's a little bit of a question, but hopefully, there are other sources of funds to alleviate those loans. So this just gives just a, I'm trying to put things in perspective a little bit, because as the project, the Public Safety Project has moved along, there's been, you know, a lot of question on $13 million, $22 million, $18 million. We've kind of been all over the board. And as you can see, these larger, the community has really supported higher amounts over the years, quite a bit higher amounts, actually. So it's not saying that we want a $22 million project, but it does put it in perspective that it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility that the community wouldn't support that. The impact of new public safety debt, the estimated impact, and we're assuming the payments start in FY17, is about $350 annually to the average residential homeowner. But note that the eliminated debt for FY18 and '19 alone would equal about 72% of the new public safety debt obligation. So that obligation drops. So what we're doing is we're, we're taking a larger view of the community's obligations as far as their, their infrastructure and their capital and their, you know, their obligations to financing their debt. We're not, you know, a good financial policy does this. We support the infrastructure as an ongoing basis. As obligations comes off, we, you know, have new obligations that theoretically come on. And, you know, we knew years ago that in 2007 and '08, and one of the reasons that the Public Safety Building did not move forward back then was, not only the economy had a hiccup around that time, but we did have a considerable debt load at that time with the Chestnut Hill land acquisitions in the schools. We were, we were a little bit above where we probably would have liked to have been. So at that time, there was, it was well-understood, I think Mrs. Fannis would probably remember this, because me and her were around at that time, that we consciously made a decision that about this time, we would be probably seriously looking at a, at a project of this scope. So it's really no surprise to me that this has come around at this time. So based on a level payment schedule for $18 million, the estimated impact of, and assuming, again, FY17 is $297 to the average residential homeowner. But again, 90% of that is recouped through the debt that is being retired from other projects. So I think that's important to note. And again, I think that's somewhat of a good policy for the town to have. Just a quick mention on the AAA bond rating. Again, the auditor, I think, mentioned this just in passing, but that it will save the town substantial money, or at least $166,000, or somewhere thereabouts. I'm sure it'll be a little off that, but on a $20 million loan over the life of the loan. So this, these things that we do, these policies that the town administrator and myself, Buggy, the board about, they really do matter. And, you know, they do pay off if they're followed through. So solid financial policies as operating budget growth and restraining that, and a capital plan, which we've now have, the OPEB, the reserves, which we've addressed, or we've tried to address, and debt management are, you know, critical. And, you know, that's sort of just a general statement, but important to always remember these things.
It might be a general statement, but it's worth really accentuating and noting. I mean, prior to Mr. Purple's arrival, I don't recall, I would be surprised if we had many of those items, if any, on that last bullet. So while, you know, you may spend 30 seconds on it, I think it's incredibly important that the citizens, residents, know that, you know, the financial controls and policies that you folks have put into place have, you know, have a dramatic input, you know, impact on, you know, on our, on our bottom line. So really, thank you for that.
Yes, that is important to note, and it does matter. And, you know, we have done a lot in the last few years with the board report, by the way, which, believe it or not, you don't get in every community. So that's, we're grateful for that. So this slide here is a net debt expense. And when I say net, I mean net of reimbursements, which mainly is the school reimbursement, because that's the largest of your general fund debt. And as you can see, it topped out in '09, '08, '09, and then steadily has just made that downward slope to FY16, where that yellow is, is where we are now. Interestingly enough, in '19 and '20, FY19 and '20, another couple of years, we would basically have no general fund obligation debt out there. And that's because of the school reimbursements in its last few years. But yet, the school loans are paid a little ahead of that. When the state issued the school construction reimbursement, there was a little bit of a gap between when their schedule was and when our schedule was. So it's created this odd tail end of where we get the benefit of getting the reimbursement, but no money's going out the door. So that's a little, that's a little interesting side note. With $18 million new money, this is what your schedule looks like. It's fairly, fairly flat. You can see in FY18, there's a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of more expense due to the loan coming online. But it's fairly consistent from what it's been from FY11 or '12 to all the way through the, all the way through the obligation. So it's a good visual to see. And if it begins in FY18, which it probably would, I would lean more towards this schedule than anything, because, because of the timing of the construction and the timing of the bonding, this is what the schedule would look like, which actually looks a little more appealing. It's actually a little more, a little more, less burdensome.
I would point out, Mr. Ballantyne, if you could go back to the graph, the scale of your graph is from zero to, tops out roughly at $3 million in FY09. You know, this is a super zoom in on a graph that if you pulled it back as a percentage of our entire budget, would look like a little, you know, more or less straight line with a little bump in the middle.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying?
Correct.
You've gotten very granular here, to your credit. But it, but it's even less bumpy than this on a, on a sort of a...
Correct. You're speaking on terms of 2% to 3% of your operating budget. So...
Sorry, you've zoomed in on 2% to 3% of the budget here.
Correct.
And so your bumps look a little more bumpy than they...
The converse is 97% we're not looking at. So it's a good point to make. The future needs, and we, you know, the town administrator and myself have not had, admittedly, lengthy discussions with the library or senior center. However, we know there are out there as buildings that will need to be addressed. We can fit, we think, these funding commitments through the town's capital plan. So we will be, this year, certainly following up with these, in particular, these projects. They're not, you know, I wouldn't say they're a year off. That's certainly not the case. However, it is time to start planning for the, for these type of things, so that as we look forward, we can have a schedule that, again, is sort of managed.
Brian, I think recreation is on there, should be on there as well. Do you agree?
The Arts Center? Or, the, well, yes, the Arts Center is on there also, yes. Yes. I didn't mention it, but that's certainly the case. We're going to end on a high note for happy holidays. But, so you will hear from the Advisory Committee or the Debt Subcommittee that a few of the issues they found out through their process was that, and again, I say we sort of intersected, that I think they agree that this is, you know, in the terms of the town's budget, is very manageable. It's probably a opportunistic time to do a project like this. You know, there probably won't be a better time act, to be honest. And, you know, any of that range between $14,000, $20 million is certainly able to be absorbed in the budget and in the, you know, the commitments the town makes. There is a little bit of a, and I'll just mention this as an aside, it's not something that I view as a huge problem right now, but the debt committee may mention that in their projections, as you know, we set our tax rate, and it's a little under $16 per thousand. There is a law that says you can't go over $25 per thousand. So that's a state law for every community. And as we go out 15, 10, 15, 20 years, it's possible we may be close to that, that area. Now, this debt that we're talking about right now is not going to change that fact, really, at all. So I'm saying as an aside, but I just want you to kind of have that in perspective, too, that, you know, the legislature will at some point address that. I just, before I came up, I looked at online, and there's 150 communities ahead of us on that list. Ahead meaning closer than we are to that problem. So it's an issue that, you know, many of us won't even be around to hear about. But just in case it's brought up, I wanted you to know about that.
Any questions, Brian?
I have one, one single one, on the impact. Town meeting approves the debt. Can we borrow that in two separate, and split it and borrow it in two separate occasions? So the impact is less?
We, theoretically, we could, yes. I'm not sure we, we, we might, when you say, there's only so much time we'd have to do that, but yes, you could do it. You could do it up...
The calendar year would split it?
You could actually split it over practically a three-year range is almost as far as you could get it. But when you do that, you got to look at the rates. There's kind of a lot more behind the scenes, but...
I'm not suggesting, but if it's favorable...
You could, theoretically, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Before we just get into a discussion overall, I think it probably makes sense, Mr. Butler, for you to go, or Ms. Cook, for you to go next and just give us your update. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Kathy in the microphone.
That one is the microphone, yeah.
Thank you. So it's on?
Yes, it is.
It doesn't sound like it. So thank you, Brian, for teeing this up. So this is a nice segue. So come on up, Tom. So deja vu. So we formed, the Advisory Committee formed a subcommittee a few months ago to take a look at the town's ability to acquire new debt, given that we expected to be presented with the Public Safety Project. Committee consisted of myself, John Butler, and Nikki Healy. Last night, we presented our preliminary work to the full Advisory Committee. So we're here now to kind of repeat what we told them last night, and to see if you guys had any questions. So long story short, we went back first and basically surveyed the various other departments to see what else they may have on their list as far as buildings go. We didn't want someone at Town Meeting to stand up and say, well, wait a minute, we want a library. So what does this do to that? We want a new school. So what does this do to that? So the, we agree with Brian's, except for the schools. The schools said, no, we don't need anything. So I'm not sure what anybody thinks about schools, but schools told us no. Libraries said yes, they, they were, they're thinking about a new building. And the council agent said they would like some type of combined community center that includes recreation. So Doreen Ferguson came in, attended that and said, yes, they're looking at something that other towns have done that puts it all in one building. They clearly said they'd like to see public safety go first. Library thinks this is going to go first. So I don't think they're even going to stand up and say, do library first, or do, do the community center first. But they do have, they do have the desire to build new buildings down the road. So once we've got that information, we basically took all three buildings to put those into the model that John put together on one of his nice spreadsheets. So we took a look at the highest cost of the Public Safety Building that Al Hamilton's committee has come up with, which was about $20 million. The library told us they thought a new library would cost about $15 million. The state was going to reimburse 45, so we used about eight for that one. And then we used 13 for the new community, combined community senior center. So $41 million is what we put into our model as far as then trying to project the town's finances for the next 30 years. So we started with our current operating budget, and basically took a look at the last 10 years to come up with the assumptions we needed to build this model. So John went back 10 years and determined that the average operating growth rate of the budget is about 3.4% for the last 10 years. And the growth rate of the town's overall fair market value, valuation is only half a percent. So he puts, he uses those two assumptions. We didn't change it for the last 10 years. The third assumption that we used, that we did change, was the ratio of the revenue that we received from property taxes, from the levy. That has grown in the last 10 years from 67% to 73%. Don't have an explanation for it, don't know why. Got some guesses, but we don't know why. So we didn't delve into that further. But of course, you know, it can't grow, it's not going to be 100% ever, it can't do that. But it was a little worrisome as to why that would happen. It means we're depending more and more on our levy and less and less on other things. So we cut that in half. We cut that 6% and cut it in half instead of the, it's going to be a 3% growth rate in the next 10 years. So those were our three main assumptions that we used to build this model. They may be right, they may be wrong, but it's the best we have at this point. So I'll give you the good news first, and I'll give you the bad news second. The good news is, we feel like the town has ample capacity to build these three buildings at something around $40 million. There was not even a question about the public safety one. So there's plenty of room to do that within our town budget. Those three buildings basically will comprise about 3% of our budget over the next 20, 25 years. So we felt comfortable that the... So we felt comfortable that the town certainly could afford to, to build the, the public safety building at twenty million dollars, if that's what is ended up being this cost. We don't have an opinion today on whether we agree with twenty million dollars, that's to come, so we're not saying we think twenty million dollars is the right number, but if twenty million dollars turns out to be the right number, we think the town can afford to, to do that. So that was the good news. The, the bad news, which Brian referred to, alluded to a minute ago, is that we're going to breach the levy ceiling of twenty-five dollars pretty quickly, with or without the buildings. The buildings really have no impact on that. So with the buildings, the breach is two thousand twenty-nine, without the buildings is two thousand thirty. So that, we think, requires some attention. We don't think it's, you know, in the scope tonight to talk about it more, but we did want to point that out because we do think that needs to now be something that Brian, Mark, advisory board, certainly, really look at going forward. So we want to use this model going forward, working with Brian to make sure we're all on the same page as far as what the model says, change it as assumptions change, you know, every ten years, we'll whack off a year and add a new year and see what it does for us. But we do want to at least point that out, and yes, half the towns are in the same boat we are and half of them aren't. Boston is eleven dollars right now, and probably going down, not up. Cambridge is in great shape, but it's a smaller town, it's with the large fixed costs that have to spread those fixed costs over a smaller community that really seem to have the problem. So there's that for you guys to, to keep in mind. So that in a nutshell, we've concluded, yes, we can, we can afford this new building. Next, we'll turn to actually trying to look at the details of what's being proposed to see what we recommend as far as the cost goes, but we're not there yet, so we're not here to talk about whether fourteen, twenty, twenty-two is the right number, but just to let you know that we do think that it is absolutely prudent to, to propose this building, and the debt associated with it should be easily repayable.
So Kathy, just so I, or Ms. Cook, just so I understand, this twenty-five tax rate, twenty-five, excuse me, dollar tax rate, with a new public safety facility at twenty million, we get to that number around twenty twenty-nine? Without it, we get to it at twenty thirty? That does not take into account the other two buildings?
Actually, it did.
It does, so all three buildings?
Takes, all three, yeah.
It's, it's, it's not a big factor.
Okay.
We have a larger issue, which we should all be thinking about, we will probably continue to think about, may have some recommendations or some thoughts on. We just presented this really for the first time last night to advisory, but, but the building is not the centerpiece of the issue.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make sure I understood that. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, again, I'll, and I apologize, because I said this last night. What John just said is important, that, John Butler, that the impact of the, of the public safety building and, in fact, the three proposed or maybe proposed buildings is, I won't say irrelevant, but, but materially irrelevant to the quote "bad news," and I hate to say we got good news and bad news, because everybody thinks of that as being, you know, one, one tips, one balance, the other way, yeah, it really doesn't.
They're almost unrelated, though.
They're almost unrelated, so let's not say it in the same sentence, is all I'm asking, and, and...
I can't, I can't take it back, I said it.
No, no, I don't.
But I agree that it is unrelated, so it's just almost a byproduct of what we did.
Yes.
We didn't expect it. John actually, at the very beginning of this, said, "We've got to worry about the twenty-five dollars." I said, "No, we don't, there's no way we've got to worry about it," and it turned out we did.
Yeah.
So he was right, without even putting the numbers together. So I hear you, and we agree. So the, the task at hand is to see if we can get this building built, so step one is to see if we can afford it, and we think we can. The other, we'll deal with the other issue separately.
Yes, yes.
The other thing, too, we started talking about, but we haven't concluded, is whether what we, we will at some point recommend whether to make the payments inside the levy or outside the levy. That'll be part of our process, too, because that may be, that's where that issue may come in a little bit. So that, where there is a little relationship, if we really think the town's got a budget problem, a way to try to help control that budget problem.
Yes, yes, great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shea.
So I would just point out, and I know unless there's been a change of heart from the discussion that this board had at our meeting a month or two ago on priorities for the town, and as documented in the meetings and the minutes, moving forward with the public safety complex is a unanimous priority item for this board, and I also attended that meeting last night, the advisory and joint public safety meeting. And if it wasn't unanimous, it was very glad to see near unanimous support...
Yes.
... for the need for this project. And, you know, we've talked a lot about the finances for it, and I just don't want to overlook the needs and how inadequate the existing facility is for the police department, and the urgency to do it and do it now. And I hope with still five months to go before town meeting, to see that in near unanimous support with the, really, the leaders and the drivers behind this project moving forward with this board, public safety study committee, and the advisory committee, that everybody keeps in mind the need and the urgency to get this done, and it's good, very happy to see everybody working cooperatively at this stage of the game, and let's not, it's too early to start drawing lines in the sand about any one particular thing, let's keep this moving, and let's do what, let's do the right thing for the people in the town and for the major departments that are going to benefit from this project.
I think everyone's on board with the notion that the, the, the need for the police station is urgent, needs to be done now, and we need to, we need to address the fire department needs and exactly how we need to determine over the next few months, but the priority of that over the other ones which we've talked about, and the urgency of doing it, I think, is all well-understood. We're all on board on that.
So we hear you, Brian. We set our meeting schedule last night, we've got, we've, this is on the top of it, and we got, we've got the information coming from Al as far as trying to understand now the details of the various proposals, so we hear you.
Very good to speak.
And I'd just like to echo that. I mean, I think you said it, Mr. Butler, really well last night. It's, it's literally just embarrassing what the condition that we have our, you know, police and fire working in. I mean, these, these men and women are here to protect us, they literally put their lives on the line every day for us, and to have them work in those conditions is unacceptable to me. And it's wonderful to hear that, you know, I, and I, and I echo, I think we're all on the same page, that it can be done, and I'm just thrilled that, you know, we're getting closer and closer to it actually being done. We'll get to the final numbers soon, but I don't, it sounds like we have room for it, which is encouraging, and also room for a few other buildings that, you know, have, have long since been, you know, time for repair as well.
This one clearly does not cannibalize those other two, so that's goodness. We've got an answer if somebody stands up at town meeting and says, "What about my library?"
Perfect, thank you.
I'd like to see more combination or joint meetings on this subject, so the audience, the viewing audience, the department heads, they see the language and the cooperation between the boards at a joint meeting, as far as updating each other, if necessary. But thank you.
Good. We've got work to do now on this project to understand what the requirements are, and we got to get it done, so that's where we are.
Okay, but any changes or any new updates you feel we need to know, it'd be helpful to have them face to face, but I thank the both of you. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to that point, I agree with you, Bonnie, about collaboration between this board and advisory, for sure. I, Mr. Rooney and I spoke, and we both agree that we do, we do want to be careful, I think you, you alluded to this last night, Mr. Butler, that we don't, that your committee, your committee gets to do its work, its cross-examination, I think aptly put, on its own, right? You've got your own work to do. To the extent you need anything in terms of materials or information that, that you feel necessary, you should have it. We'd prefer you, that, that you address those needs, if we have it as a board or as our, the committee we set up, Mr. Hamilton's committee, make those requests to us through the town administrator. And I'll, and I'll be very upfront, we want to keep the, sort of the footprints of your committee and our subcommittee, our appointed committee as separate as possible. I assume you, you don't disagree.
It really should, that statement you made about, it sounds like you're asking Janet Maney, the chair of advisory, on behalf of advisory, go to Mr. Purple and not Mr. Hamilton directly?
That's correct.
You should, and we'll, we can pass that on, but it's really, it's really, at this point, the work, it's really the work of the whole, of the committee as a whole.
Yes.
As you may recall from last night, we decided that we were all going to funnel questions we had to Janet. Janet, at the time, I thought was being said based on the volunteering of this by Mr. Hamilton, that she should send requests to Mr. Hamilton. If you, if you want them sent to Mr. Purple, we can certainly pass that on to Janet, doesn't matter to us.
Okay, or we, we can, we can make that request directly to Janet.
Mr. Hamilton was volunteering to send out materials last night that he had collected, so I don't know what the status of that is.
Well, one of the, one of the things is that I just learned about three hours ago that the, the space needs study that was talked about at length last night has since been revised, and no one has a copy of the new revised space needs, so obviously you want to be operating with the most current space needs, so I, I think there's, you know, one source of information is going to be very important.
Who has it?
I, I don't think the consultant has given it to us yet. It's in the process of being revised.
I don't have it.
So, and Mr. Hamilton has asked on multiple occasions for direction from this board as to the direction that his committee should be going and what their next step is, and, and I would suggest, and I don't know what, if there's, we can have a discussion with this, is that they've come up with, I believe, four options. I would like the committee to present to the board at least two, whittle it down to, from four to two. One with a renovation to the fire station and one with a new fire station, because those seem to be the two options relative to the fire station, but don't present this board with four, I'd like to get it down to two. And, and also, based upon the, the space needs that has been voted on by that committee, which I understand was unanimously voted on, let's, let's move forward with that and get it to us, to our board, so that we can then ultimately make a recommendation to town meeting. So, Mr. Hamilton, to the extent they need direction, we need the committee, his committee, to whittle it down to at least two, not four options, and, and use the space needs that the committee is in agreement on, and I think we need to go forward with that. I don't know if there's any further direction that we can give Mr. Hamilton at this point, but that's what I would make the recommendation, rather than having all four options before us as we were presented with last time.
Any comment?
I agree.
Yeah, I imagine you would, I, I just heard that for the first time, but I imagine you would prefer that happen before you guys jump off the end of the diving board?
We're a subcommittee, we represent the subcommittee of advisory.
Right, right, fair enough.
We're pretty much, we, we were charged with doing some financial analysis and debt needs analysis, and we kind of wrapped that up.
Yeah.
We reported last night to advisory, many of you were in attendance, you know, heard it then, but we're re-reporting it now, but, but, but really, we're not the right audience for this.
Yeah, my, my only suggestion is rather than having four options from the committee, I would like them to whittle it down, because we, that's what we put that committee together for.
Good for us also, I know.
Yeah.
Great. Anything further?
Uh, Ms. Cook, I know you summarized your work in less than ten minutes, and, and I want people to understand that the effort it took to get to that ten minutes was certainly a lot longer than ten minutes, and I want to thank you and Mr. But...
I was trying to balance the fact that maybe you'd heard this last night versus...
I know, but I wanted to thank you and Mr. Butler for...
Trying to do something in the middle to, to get it out, but not necessarily to say your name.
These things do not just happen scribbling notes before the meeting, there's a lot of preparation and a lot of research that is conducted, and I want to thank you and, and Mr. Butler and, and your entire committee for, for this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrator report?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any questions.
Now, I do want to mention that the single-family home at twenty-six Gilmore Road that is part of the affordable housing program, there's a deadline coming up of December thirtieth, so just a couple of weeks, for applications to be submitted in order to compete in the lottery. Again, that deadline is December thirtieth, 2015. There's a very nice color brochure on the website of mcohousingservices.com, that's mcohousingservices.com, and there's a phone number, and I'll read it, nine seven eight two three five 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 nine five. I don't know how, any other avenue I can make this more easy for anyone watching this, but to the extent that you want to enter the lottery for this affordable housing at twenty-six Gilmore Road, be, be warned that the deadline is December thirtieth. With that, Mr. Semino, consent agenda, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve consent agenda items one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one question. The easement for the water main, is, does that have to go to town meeting still, or is that just action?
It does not, it, it can be approved by this board. We checked with council on that issue.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve consented, for, for discussion, approve consent agenda, item five, which is to approve the executive session minutes of November seventeen and December first of 2015.
In two parts, we'll do November seventeenth first, if we may.
I'll move, I'll amend my motion to approve the executive session minutes from November seventeen, 2015.
Second.
Uh, in terms of discussion, those are as revised, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I move that we approve the executive session minutes of December one, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstent, abstention. Any further public comment, issues, before we enter into executive session? Seeing none, the board will be entering into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Thirty, Lodge A, Section two one, and not returning to open session. The issue to be discussed is to consider the purchase of real property, which is exemption, exemption number six. As I have determined that having the discussion in open session may be detrimental to the public body's negotiating, negotiating position. I apologize for not speaking clearly. It recall, requires a roll call vote. Rooney, aye.
Semino, aye.
Kalinda, aye.
Shea, aye.
We are in executive session. Thank you for coming.